Okay, I'll call this meeting to order at six thirty P M. Let's start the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Quick look at the minutes. Sure, if I have a chance to read the minutes, so at this time I would entertain a motion to approve them.
Uh, I want, I'll make a motion that we accept the first set of minutes from the twenty fourth. I do have a question on the second one.
Okay, um, you want?
The one that the Silicones meeting.
Okay.
It says that, uh, I made a motion to nominate, appoint Michael Crusoe and Adam Little, uh, to the planning board, and then it also says, I second them. I don't know if that's.
Oh, wait, motion made by Charles Carroll to open the planning board meetings.
Is that correct or am I reading it wrong?
Yep, we gotta change that.
Okay. So otherwise, I, my motion to accept both with a correction.
So good, perfect. Any discussion? See none? I'm gonna do a roll call. Uh, Dennis?
Yes. I was up then.
Oh, you, I'm saying, and I vote yes. Perfect. Okay.
So Charlie and Dennis, who made that? Cause I couldn't tell.
I think I made the motion.
Yeah, I think, I think Charlie made the motion.
I believe Dennis said.
Like, um, can I get a motion to blah, blah, blah?
I'd entertain a motion, and then Dennis sees it.
I second it.
Okay, so you'll be the first, okay, sure, okay. Thanks, guys.
You got it. Okay. It's all set, so moving along. Uh, A and R for seven eleven Boltonville Road.
So we kinda need Kirk to weigh on in on this one. He's supposed to be coming on by phone. Um, and I believe that if you reorder the agenda and do seven more S F first, that one should be pretty quick.
Sure. Hold like Kristoff wait a little bit, that's okay. He likes hanging out with us anyway.
Time today, so.
Right, there you go. Okay.
No, no worries.
And this is attorney Glenny.
Good evening, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
I believe you all have a copy of the plan. Well, give us a little info on what, uh?
Sure, so this has been a, at least for me, a very long and ongoing saga that there was encroachment issues on this property. Um, the Smith property on Morris Ave, they had structures that were encroaching upon the Poreer property on State Road. Um, after extensive negotiations, they've reached a boundary line agreement, which they've actually signed a boundary line agreement back in September, um, based on this plan. We're now asking, I wanted to get the boundary line agreement signed first, so now I'm asking for the plan to be approved to, to alleviate those encroachment issues.
So is there, how much property is being transferred or how far is the, the property line being adjusted?
Property line is being adjusted by, if you look, land four hundred and twenty square feet.
Very. Or dotted line to hit camper, so they.
Yeah, we'll just say.
It gives the camper one foot of clearance, it appears.
Yes. It's a camper, but it's pretty much permanently attached to.
Okay. Okay, square feet.
Kirk is on the line, by the way.
Welcome Kirk.
Hello. Um, you guys are on West Ave right now, correct?
Yes, we are.
Okay. What's the reasoning, what's the reasoning behind, uh, giving a straight line over there?
To alleviate encroachment issue.
Okay. So you're making a non-conforming lot a little smaller, correct?
Um, I think they're both non-conformings, we're making one smaller and one la- larger.
Meaning the, um, Michael and Nancy Smith is getting a little bit larger, where Phil Pore is getting a little smaller.
Correct.
Okay. It seems pretty insignificant just to clean things up, so.
Exactly, so I think.
I have no issues with it myself.
Yeah. Any questions, any thoughts from the board?
No. Did you wanna go down the checklist, just the sake of?
Sure.
Record keeping.
Uh, four copies of plan?
Yes.
Uh, identification of plan by name of owner, record and location of land in question. Yep. Uh, statement approval under subdivision. We have that. Zoning classification and location of any zoning district of boundaries. Uh, in the case of creation of a new lot, the remaining land area, um, which is really not.
Not applicable.
Uh, notice any decisions by Board of Appeals?
Not applicable.
Uh, name of any butters?
Yes.
Distance to the nearest permanent monument?
Yeah, there's stuff out there, there's pins.
Uh, location of all existing buildings, including setback inside rear yard designation, see that? Uh, location of any easement or way? Whether there's any?
No.
Uh, four copies of Form A?
Yes.
Four copies of A and R?
Yes.
Uh, description of lots?
That was in here, I believe, so. Yes.
Perfect. And looks like we are waiving the fees because nothing is being, you know, new law is created, correct?
I was going to ask you just to make sure, but it's not creating any new lots.
Right, so.
Okay.
Well, I still think we need to do the three hundred dollars because we've had that situation before where people just trading lines and whatnot, we always at least charge you the base amount for three hundred dollars.
Okay.
What's that? Okay. So we can update that. Uh, all lots up on a qualified way. All lots have adequate frontage, which.
While they're existing, non-conforming, so yes.
Uh, vital access exists to each lot, does. All lots have adequate acreage, which again, they're already.
Non-conforming, existing, yeah.
Is there a written meets and bounds for this? Is that the description? Do we know if we have a copy of the? We do.
It should have been in your packet too.
Oh, is it part of the agreement? Yeah.
Yes.
Perfect. Yes. I see. Perfect. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the plans as submitted.
I'll make a motion to accept the plan as presented.
Just makes the motion, do I have a second? Second, thank you. Um, any discussion on the motion? See none? Uh, Dennis?
Yes.
Frank?
Mike? Yes.
Um, Kirk?
Yes.
Yes, and I also vote yes, so plans are approved as submitted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess it's who's last.
Hey, Mike, welcome back.
Thank you.
No, we should be thanking you.
Is there other member there?
Not yet.
Okay.
Today's date?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, okay.
It's twenty twenty-five, Dennis.
You will never live that down, Mike.
No. Okay, Kristoff, do you wanna give us a quick little rundown of what we're looking at?
Um, hi, guys, yeah. Hi Kirk, can you hear me all right?
Yeah, we're good, yep.
Okay.
Welcome back to you too.
No, thank you, yeah, it's been a while. And Charlie was on time, I, I was here, I went. So this situation you gentlemen might remember came across your desk probably three months ago. And to make a long sad story short, um, I am executing the estate of Richard Charter, who's my cousin. And he died in July of twenty twenty-four, his, he sold or tried to sell a piece of land to the town of Templeton in twenty March of twenty twenty-four. They approached him, I gather, and he, it, it, we were talking about a parcel of seventeen square feet on the corner of Boltonville Road and what's that on the road?
Vernon. Vernon, yeah.
So the, the paperwork was, was fumbled, and so it took me hiring an attorney who's now unfortunately deceased and twelve months to sort it out with your help. Thank you very much for your help and the zoning board's help. So now that's sorted out, and I was able to record the transaction with, with Wister Registered Deeds, so now Town of Templeton owns that seventeen square feet, which is paved, I think, or sidewalk. And now I'm left to execute the rest of the estate. What's left is three parcels. There's, there, there are two parcels that I, that are pre-existing, non-conforming building lots. In the big picture that you're looking at, I don't know if you can see it Kirk, but it's, it's the trailer, which is on the corner of Vernon and.
Yeah, I have a plan, I have a plan on my phone, so I'm looking at it, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks. And then it's the part, the, the lot with the coal building on it.
Uh, you mean, lot two, are you talking about lot two, or are you talking about lot one, the small building?
And lot one is the trailer where somebody's living and it has a garage there also.
Right, okay, lot two is the coal bin, yeah.
Lot two has a coal bin that Ernie Turkot uses, so.
Yep.
In the will, my cousin left that lot two to Ernie Turkot because he's been using it for coal for a million years.
Right.
And would like to continue. So I need to, to deed that lot to Mr. Turkot. But there's a third parcel, which is behind both of the lots, it's a, it's a long skinny piece. My proposal to the board is to, and you, and you don't have it Kirk, but I gave the, the gentleman, uh, uh, what the previous division of the land is that shows that there's a third one. In the, in the version you're looking at, I've added the third piece to lot one.
Okay.
So I've added another piece, my proposal is that I add the other piece to lot one, making it more conforming than it was before Templeton took the triangle, which made it less conforming, and now it's more conforming than it is after Templeton took the triangle. And then the other lot, which is, I've shown as lot two, just remains a pre-existing, non-conforming lot, which I give to Mr., I don't give, but I execute according to the will, which deeds it to Mr. Turkot.
Okay, so Kristoff, question, is lot two already an existing lot all by itself, has its own lines and own description by itself already?
They're all, they're all under one deed, but they all, but they, in, in the plan, the other plan that I gave them, it shows under the deed that, yes, it was a lot, it was purchased at a separate time from what's labeled as lot two was purchased at a separate time than what's labeled as lot one, they both were pre-existing, non-conforming lots, and they both had buildings on them. And the building on lot two, the coal thing, was never used in conjunction with the home on lot one, it was a separate use in a separate lot.
So they did have their own descriptions and deeds at one time?
Correct.
But then they were rolled back to one lot, onto lot one?
It was never officially.
Never officially, yeah.
All just, they were, they were used by that, but never, it all still stands.
Okay.
Separately.
All right, so the parcel you're talking about is the one above them both, which abuts the, um, Robert, um.
Yeah. Blank. That's, that's the parcel that I wanna add to what I'm calling lot one, it's part of what I'm calling lot one now.
Robert LaBlenque, yeah, okay, were you, but, is that, yeah, okay, were you butting him, that sliver of land right there is what you, so it's gonna be like a pork chop right there?
Correct.
Okay, up and down, all right.
It just helps make the lot one more conforming, and it's a stupid, long piece of lawn that someone should use.
That's really what, thirty-two feet wide effectively?
Yeah.
Actually, I, I don't even think it's that wide.
Yeah, not even.
Cause that's to the, the trailer.
Kristoff, just, I mean, just a thought, not to spend more of your money, whatever, but wouldn't it been feasible to make them more, both of them more non-conforming by just drawing the line between them, between them straight back? So they both ended up with bigger lots?
Well, the reason I, I'm proposing that lot two is where it is, bec- is that those are the, those are the original lines of that lot that's been there forever and ever, amen. So I'm trying to change.
That's what was willed, that's what was willed as well.
That's what was willed, exactly. I got one hand behind my back.
Okay.
I, it's funny, I thought the same thing, Kirk, I'll just do that, but yeah, it makes sense, just keep that all with the one, with the lot one.
And I'm, I'm also obviously comfortable with you guys, but I'm, I'm, I, I kinda got left on the altar in, in representation, I'm trying to pick up the pieces as best I can.
Yeah, okay.
Keep it, keep it simple.
Yeah. I mean, it, it spells out pretty good by itself, I just don't know, um, I have no problem with it now, now that I understand it. But I just don't know if it's a planning board or Z B A issue, that's all I don't know. That's what I just, I'm kinda, I don't know if we need to research that, or everybody's fine with it, I have no idea, what's the rest of the board think?
Well, I kinda see it basically just, again, we're, we're merging those two lots and get, making one a little less non-conforming.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't, I don't see a big issue with it.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I, I don't either. I don't either.
Yeah, we're really not, not changing anything, just adding that, you can't do anything with that lot anyways, it's out there, so it might as well be attached to this, and it'll clear it up a bit.
Yep.
The rest of board thoughts?
I would say yes.
Yeah.
So is the, the part that you wanna add on to lot one, is that described in parcel one or two? So.
It's this little paper that I could put the sign in my book.
Yeah, you had this here.
Yeah, it's this paper that I'm proposing is add to this.
So does this have its own, is this already described as parcel two?
Yeah, it, it, right now it's all one need, by, by making a decision today, we make this have a separate need.
All right, so you're kind of really taking that out, yeah, yeah.
You're really just carving number two out of one, correct?
Right, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And before it can be processed, we'll have to have the deed descriptions for each one.
Yep.
Yeah, I have, I have an attorney who's gonna do that already lined up, it, it's, uh, Roachford Office, he does closings for me in Leominster. But he said he's, he can do a simple deed.
Nice. So yeah, I mean, I, I, I think we should go for it, so, I mean, unless anyone has any other thoughts, I would.
How so, how soon can you get a description for that lot? To make us whole with our paperwork?
Soon.
So two exhibit As is what we'll need, that's, that's what they're called, that's the description of the.
Of each one, yeah, I, I, the way I left it with, with attorney Nick Kirk, is I was bringing, if this was a, if I was successful tonight, I was bringing him the plan tomorrow, and he was gonna work on it as soon as he could, so I would say within a week.
Okay.
Even within days, I mean, I'm pushing hard to get this wrapped up.
Right. Um.
Do we wanna vote it with, uh, the contingency of, um, getting the descriptions, that way it's already done, and then once it all comes together?
Cause we have twenty-one days to render a decision. And of course, we meet in what, two weeks, I don't know if we have an agenda in two weeks, Laurie, do we have an agenda for in two weeks?
So far, the agenda revolves around possible zoning changes. Discussion.
Okay.
What I had emailed you.
All right. Just trying to keep up with the politics end of it, Kristoff, as you know. Um, I think like Charlie said, we can do it with a contingency, uh, contingency of, uh, um, we have the description within twenty-one days.
I would also maintain all of the documents, they wouldn't be released until we received what we need.
Yes, we can go with something like that. Uh, we can hold you a mile hour hostage.
Okay.
Done it before.
Are you good with that, Kristoff?
Yeah, I'm good with it, yeah.
That way.
Yeah, it's a decision made tonight with, with the contingency that I get the additional paperwork, that seems.
And once that's done, it all kind of, that way we're not dragging it back up again in the meeting, so. Um, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the plans as submitted with the contingency of waiting for two.
Oh, can I interject?
Sure can.
For paperwork's sake, do you wanna go down the line?
Yes.
I also pre, I did not charge him because we're still dealing with.
All of the.
Yeah, correct.
Cause, and I'm saying, it obviously is a little more complicated because it's part of the town was purchasing that land as well. So, uh, four copies of plan, which we have.
We do.
Uh, identification of the plan by name of owner of record. That is on there. Uh, statement approval under subdivision control law not required. That is on there, correct? Uh, zoning classification and location of any zoning district boundaries that may lie within the focus of the plan, locus of the plan. Zoning district, right there. Uh, in the case of creation of a new lot, the remaining land area and frontage of the land in the ownership of the applicant, which, yeah, is, well.
It'd be the estate?
Right.
You can go, okay, that's all right.
Yeah, okay. Uh, notice any decisions not applicable?
Well.
I'll just make it. Making a note on that, one as far as the estate of Richard Charter.
Okay.
I also included a copy of the zoning board of appeals with the book and page number of everything that was filed.
Okay, so there actually is, perfect. Uh, names of butters? Uh, distance to the nearest permanent monument?
Yeah, there's a few.
Uh, location of all existing buildings, including setback inside and rear yard designation. Uh, location of any easement or way?
Not a buckle.
Uh.
Number three is the contingent.
Right. Uh, four copies of A and R, notice stamped by the town clerk.
Yes.
Uh, description of lots.
That's also part of it, yeah.
Uh, all lots up on a qualified way. You know? All lots have adequate frontage, again.
That's.
Yep. Uh, vital access exists to each lot. And all lots have adequate acreage, again.
Again, the pre-existing, non-conforming.
It's safe now, can I make a most?
Yes.
At this time, I'd exchange a motion to approve the plans as submitted, uh, with the contingency of receiving the, um, Form As upon their completion.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll talk to him.
Good. She made a second, do we, any discussion on the motion? See none? Dennis?
Yes.
Frank? Kirk?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Excellent, so those are approved. Thanks, guys, thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
I know.
I've been learning, I've been learning a lot. Yes, yeah. More work than I thought.
I mean, the whole thing of.
Well, that was a, that was a, I mean, sad, sad, but, but also an unexpected.
Exactly.
All right, well, thank you very much, Kirk, I don't even see me or not, I don't know if this camera works, but.
Yeah, I see you there, buddy.
Thanks, have a good night.
Take care.
Take care.
Thanks, Jessica.
Okay, I'm gonna pass these down, they all need a signature.
Yeah.
Ooh, good arms. I also have, while you guys are doing that, I did do a new signature card for the registry of deeds, so if you could please sign next to your name, I'd appreciate that.
Then I'll come in tomorrow, Laurie.
That's fine. I'll get all your signatures.
Who was our newest member, not Mike, the other guy, who was it?
Adam Little. Um, and he has been responsive to emails and things like that, um. He's still, he has to make a trip in and be sworn in by Carol. And we'll be good to go.
All right, good.
I did put a spot on the agenda for, um, any subjects that any of you may want at, on the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I saw that September ninth would be the next meeting. Uh, I also talked to Wes Fliss, and he doesn't think they'll be ready until October.
Okay.
So it'll be pretty much regular meetings until then.
Okay.
You should also know that on September sixteenth, I will be having a knee replacement, so I don't know how long it'll be before you see me again, but Jess and I will be communicating uh, in keeping things.
We'll fill you right in here.
I, I honestly don't think I'm gonna have a problem, but I do think of myself as Wonder Woman, so, you know.
We kinda think it like that too, so.
It, it, it could change.
Where were we on that one?
We're gonna do the mile hours tonight?
Yes, please. Good call, Dennis.
We didn't wanna tell you about Dennis, we wanted to give you a chance to, uh, get caught up.
Kirk, was there anything else you wanted on the agenda for the next meeting?
Uh, no, I didn't, um, I don't know if the, well, yeah, we always have that.
Well, we can talk about that later anyway, um, but the war, the warrant is open for fall town meeting.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, when is the fall town meeting, November or something? We know?
I don't know, usually the beginning of November, the end of October.
Yeah.
I, I can check with Carol tomorrow and I'll provide.
I don't believe there's any zoning, anything anybody wants to tackle right now, if anything, if anything comes up, we'll do it for the annual, cause I know sometimes we get a little, um, pushback when it comes to zoning and stuff during the, uh, special versus the annual town meeting, so.
Okay.
What we got left on the agenda, we all set?
I believe we are.
We are.
Okay. All right, guys, I'm signing off, have a good night.
Good night.
I believe there's enough of you to adjourn and have it be proper. Next time, I gotta bring you something to do. Next time, I gotta bring you something to do.
Too many details.
Damn, are you trying to skip this one? Just get that one. Might keep us on our toes.
I guess.
That sounded weird, you know, sorry. Now, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Seconded.
Any discussion?